County Board of Health regular meeting November 17, 2025. Call it a quarter at 6:30 PM. I'd like to begin the meeting with a roll call, please.
All right. Dr. Ansler?
Here.
Ms. Altough? Ms. Carmen? Ms. Hopfield?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Gaffney?
Yes, here.
Dr. Katz?
Here.
Ms. Lawson?
Here.
Dr. McGuire? Mr. Markison?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
And Dr. Zierich?
Here.
There are sufficient members present to have a quarrel and conduct the meeting. Item two on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody here for public comments? You're seeing none, we'll move on to item three. Minutes to approve from the regular meeting October 20, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Dr. Ansler moves. Does that move to a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Gaffney? And anybody see any of your admissions in the minutes? You're seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I have it. Minutes are approved. Employee recognition. We have two employees to recognize today. First one is from the nursing department.
Correct.
Letitia McGana, for 10 years of service.
Yes.
Here we go.
We are thankful that have had Letty on our team serving in immunization and as a Spanish translator. So we're thankful for her dedicated service.
Thank you. Good to hear it. 10 years of service, it's good. Let's give her a round of applause, please. The next employee is Kathy Rondorf. For 20 years of service to our department, and she is in the Division of Animal Health. Correct.
She is. Kathy has been with us for 20 years. She started at the facility over in Banford. I don't know if any of you remember that facility, it was pretty small. When she started over there, she was one of the first employees to move over to Crystal Lake facility. She's been an admin specialist part-time when she started. Once her kids got into college, let's say maybe seven, eight years ago, we were able to turn her position into a full-time, we really needed that. And then we had a couple turnovers, people promoted in the facility. And now she's our admin coordinator. She's got a big job with that. She supervises all of our office staff. She supervises all the money we take in for registration. She has that responsibility. And she processes all of our court cases. So she has to track them, know when there's potential that they may become an OB violation that has to go to court. She processes all the documentation for the courts. And she actually represents us in the court as well. We're very happy to have Kathy with us. We're glad that she stayed with us. And she also represents our division on the employee appreciation committee. Did I say that right? I want to say three or four years now. She's been a great addition to that program. And then every time, anytime we have another type of employee event or something come up, she always volunteers help. We're very glad to have her.
Excellent. Thank you, Pam. And the next item on the agenda is department division updates. Ms. Adamson?
Okay, just a couple of quick things. So you may have read it in the news, but the SNAP benefits have been restored in full for Illinois. And they're expecting that the November payments will be made in full by November 20. So that's good news in time for Thanksgiving. The county budget is slated to be approved tomorrow. Fingers crossed. No, they do have to vote on the budget tomorrow. However, it's not yet clear what direction they are going to take. At last week's COW, the chief financial officer and the treasurer, you know, presented data on where the county is. A couple of things that they're looking at is a look back. Hopefully I don't have to describe that for you, but it's like the difference of what they could have taken over the last few years versus what they actually took on the levy. They also looked at a scenario with CPI and growth. But there was also conversation about cuts. So it's really not clear yet, but it will be tomorrow. And I can shoot out an email Wednesday morning when we know what the final tally is and what the direction is.
Do we know what the status of our vehicle requests?
So we have gotten this year, we just got a few cars. We're expected to get a couple more before the end of the year, I believe. And then we're on the list to get five more cars next spring-ish. But we are working with the person who oversees the fleet. And, you know, we're hopeful that it's not a, what they're trying to do is create a a cycle where they buy five cars, they take five cars out. But until we reach our optimal fleet level internally, and we're working on that with the directors to determine what we feel like is the minimum number of vehicles we need, we're hopeful we can work with them. We've been working with county administration to support us in, let's say, buy five cars, take out two. So that gives us a net three till we reach that total number. But we're working on that internally.
But we don't know what the total number is that we're allowed?
Well, they haven't given us a number. We want to give them a number of what we feel like is our ideal amount. So that we can work over the years to get to that amount if they're not there already. If that makes sense. Because they want to start getting on a regular rotation schedule. That's what they do with the sheriff's fleet. And we would be on a similar cycle. So they would just automatically order vehicles, replace them, I think every five years, something like that. So we'd have newer vehicles and not keep these.
Are you asking if they're in the budget for approval that's going on?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
I was asked.
Okay. I'm sorry. So it's hard for me to answer that directly because the money is not in our budget. It's actually sitting in county administration's budget, yes. But I just met with them two weeks ago, and we just had this discussion about additional cars are on order for us to replace some of our existing fleet. And then we are working with them to not replace all of the ones they have ordered till we build that up. Because if ever there's an accident, and we have had a few, that total number, let's say it's 15, and there's two out for service, you know, now we're down to 13. And so if we know, if 15 is the magic number, we have to make sure every time they're rotating those out, that they put more in than they take out. But yes, actually, there is an ongoing budget for vehicles. It does not necessarily mean we will every year have replacements. I think once we get on that rotation, I'll have a better answer for you.
Because I know we asked for four.
We did. So the supplemental, it is not in our supplemental request anymore. In fact, all of our supplementals, with the exception of some staffing, have been taken off. So because they're going to fund it in a different way.
Oh. Not ever to be seen again, but somewhere.
Pennies from heaven?
The county does budget for it, but it won't be, it does not sit in our budget specifically. So they knew we wanted additional vehicles, and they're working with us to get us that additional, those additional vehicles.
And they're doing the best they can to get some for us.
Correct.
That's great.
Anybody else?
You can ask for it, huh?
Just for the record, for those that are either watching or listening tonight, a board member, Carmen, has joined the meeting. Any further questions? Thank you. Director Knoll?
Just a couple of quick things. Earlier in the year, I had talked about Recycle Coach, which is the web-based what goes where type of application that will be available for all of our residents. We have been working with the vendor and one of our summer staff. So we have that up, ready to go, so it'll go up on our website. I'll link to that shortly. And what that will do is give kind of a place for everyone to go to, to look to where to recycle things. So we're working with the sustainability coordinator at MCC that coordinates doing the green guide from McHenry County, you know, and they'll make a determination if they want to continue that, or if they'll just work with us and we'll just do it all online. So we're excited to have that coming to fruition. And then the second step in that will be to open it up to the municipalities, who then can add in their own information. And so if you're, let's say, in Woodstock, and you want to know when your pickup days are and things like that, all of that will be at that location. So it'll be a nice thing for our residents to be able to reference. And then.
Is that just for recycling or for garbage?
It could be for franchise agreements, garbage pickup, recycling, all those types of things. So it's going to be actually quite nice. And then we did learn from our electronics vendor that we worked with for quite a few years that they are no longer interested in moving into 2026 to do our one-day recycling events. It has to do a lot with the reduction in the amount of electronics that are collected every year, and in conjunction with the fact that there are other places that also provide the service now, where a few years ago, that was not the case. So we're going to work with them to see, you know, what that's going to look like next year, but our recycling events will be a little bit different. The recycling of electronics can always take place at the permanent facility on Terracotta there in Crystal Lake. It's Algen Recycling. And so I'll bring more information back when we've worked through that process, and we'll see what it's going to look like next year. That's all I have.
Any questions on the board? I received notice that there's a change in styrofoam recycling.
Yes.
Yeah.
You might want to answer that.
Oh, sure. So the defenders are no longer recycling styrofoam. What happened is, you know, most of the recycling, most of the styrofoam we're getting now is like the softer cheap kind, kind of like what you get in a takeout container. Or, you know, when you get like a package and you just open it up and it just comes like all over you. That's what we're getting mostly. And the compressor can't take it, and a new compressor is like, I don't know, it was like, I can't remember, they said $25,000 or $75,000. So we're unable to compress it. And Dart, who was taking it, was only letting us go once a month when we had two trucks full loads every month. So we had a lot of backlog, and we don't have anyone to take it anymore. So I encourage you to not use styrofoam because it's going to go straight to the landfill. As a. It's going to the landfill. Angottquin still does. Small, Gilman Township, that was defenders, that was us. That was me breaking it down, bringing the bag. You mean off of 14 over there? Yeah, that was the defenders. That's not, we used. In the garage, was you guys? Yeah, that was us. We rented a U-Haul every week. Someone came and I bagged it once a month, there for a couple hours, bagging it out. I thought you were in Woodstock for some reason this time, but. Yeah, I know there's three of them. So yeah, all of them, all my clothes, yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Air force of nature.
Well, you gotta do what you gotta do, man.
I love it.
Well, we talked to people over there, they should put signs up on those dumpsters because people are throwing plastic bags in with glass and plastic recycling.
Which cycling.
Yeah. Well, that ruins everything, I mean. Yeah. So, you know, someone would take our, you know, styrofoam, gladly do it again, so. You know, there's a chemical you can just pour in and just.
Doesn't it melt down?
No, there isn't. You put it in, it just shrinks it down to like nothing. It's just air, really, for the styrofoam.
No? Doesn't melt?
I don't know.
Yeah, but it's burned.
When it's burnt or, you know, I mean, it takes a long time in the landfill to take up those, so. But yeah, so yeah, so no more recycling. I know, I think Spalco still does it, but they do a very small amount as well because they were using Dart as well. So I don't know if they're still be able to do that. So we'll see. And that's the solid waste agency for Lake County. Yes.
Director Howell?
Very sad story.
Thank you. I just have my hands full, like Kathy did. We are fully staffed. I'd like to knock on wood, but I have no wood to knock on. We had our last hire was an admin specialist for the office, Maria. Maria was a volunteer with us and just thought she wanted to get to know more about government. And specifically, she has a, you know, a heart for animal welfare, so she just came on a few weeks ago. We're happy to have her there, too. We had our inspection of our washer and dryer. We did have it on as a supplemental, but we took it off. And then we thought we were going to get more time and hope to put it on next year's. But it has a lot of rust. Apparently, there was a leak that they did not know about, and it has a lot of rust. So we are, we have a competitive bid, sorry, a competitive quote out there right now with an installation of 1126. We'll see, everything has to be in tomorrow, but we all know how that goes with big equipment, whether they actually have it in stock or not. And believe it or not, they are very, very expensive. I will just not even quote what we've seen until we know when the bids come in. We have said that we would take a refurbished one, too, washer and dryer, that still has some good light bits, so we'll see what they come back with.
Did you get anything from Thompson Appliance in Woodstock?
I don't know who all the places purchasing handled it for us. So we'll, I don't know till tomorrow.
Okay. If you don't, let me know because he's really just going into repairs, he's got a whole warehouse full of them.
Yep. Big ones, big industrial ones. Okay. And then, I think actually that was all I had today. Oh, that is all I have. I was going to, sorry. I was going to talk about online relinquish requests because if you happen to notice, they have almost doubled. Not quite yet, but the last couple of months, they've doubled compared to last year. A lot of them are, they've lost their job, they're losing their housing. We try to, we try to get resources for them if we can, but sometimes people don't contact us until they're really in just such a desperate situation that they need to relinquish the animal right away. We've seen a lot of allergies come through. You know, children have allergies, they took, maybe they took the animal from a family member, and then the children have allergies to the animal. So we always take any sick, injured, or if there's a medical issue in the household, or if an animal has been aggressive. But with 46 relinquish requests, we can't take all of those animals. So we put them on a waitlist, and then we have to prioritize that based on those priorities I just said, and then they can come in to relinquish their animals. But remember, we have to keep at least, we try to keep at least 15 to 20 of our cages available for if we had to bring animals, a group of animals in a stray, maybe someone passes away and there's no next of kin. We had that recently. Or if there's some kind of hoarding or cruelty case, we have to take them. Right now, we have a lot of cats. We've got to look at the exact number, but if you've ever been in our kitchen, we have six white cages, and that's a lot in our kitchen, so.
Take the children instead.
Take what?
Take the children instead.
I'm going to play with cats. So I just thought you should be aware of that and let you know next month again what we're seeing, how it's going. It doesn't matter whether we run a special on adoptive animals, or here have a two-fer, you know, two cats for the price of one. People are just having a hard time getting their animals, keeping their animals, and we're doing the best we can to meet their needs. But we have to have enough cages.
I can give you some more.
Isn't it, we have to hire more staff?
I have.
It'd have to line our garage.
Yes.
Is your building okay after that car accident?
Yes, that was really, it was really cosmetic. So they already have a plan for fixing it. They're waiting for the material to come in.
What happened?
Okay. Karen Roman ran in.
Yeah, she hit the gas instead of the brake.
Yeah.
Just one of the front. Would you call that a pillar, what do you call that?
Yeah, it's kind of a cosmetic pillar.
Yeah. It's just the cosmetic powder.
But facilities has said that they're, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Ann, but facilities is going to put up some kind of barrier now to make sure cars can't just, because right there, the curb isn't a full curb, it starts to slope.
Yeah. They just need like wheel steps.
So there's nothing to like, kind of halt you from.
Is it ADA access?
It is not the ADA access.
But it's, yeah, it's not the ADA slots. But it looks like.
Yeah, it looks like ADA access, but that's also where all of our vans will park once we're done, so it won't really be.
Put a bomb on it.
Was there any injuries?
Not as far as I know.
Okay. Any bales? Director Merron?
Thank you. So Employee Appreciation Week was a great success. We had the luncheon on October 30th. Portillo's catered, and a good time was had by all. Crystal Lake update, everything's okay.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Portillo's closed?
Yeah. You ate them out of house and.
Yeah. I don't know.
Do you think it closes?
No.
No.
Portillo's in Crystal Lake?
The one on.
14?
14.
One near.
Village Square?
It's in Lake in the Hills, I guess.
The big one? Really, the new one there on Randall?
Cross on Randall and.
Big club.
What is it?
I don't either. They tell us. They're going to stop staff benefits, and we're like, oh, that's. They tell us we're going to go to Portillo's, and we're like.
Really?
Around it. I drove for milk, I couldn't.
I made better chocolate cake than you.
Betty Crocker?
No, it's.
It's Betty Crocker.
The IT closet update went very well. All the cabling has been all updated, connected, and shelf, new shelving has been put in for future equipment. The flooring, carpet, and reception area on the clinic side are almost completed. The glaciers are coming in from glass in around the reception areas. So we're excited about that. We will be moving animal control over to nursing side so that they can then start the animal control demolition on that side. So everything is on schedule. We still look to be starting that the week of Thanksgiving and moving them. It's only going to be about seven employees that we will be moving over to the nursing side. Otherwise, animal control, you poor people, will still be in the construction zone, so God love them.
But they're putting on plastic for us.
Yes. Or maybe even a.
Maybe.
We have a meeting tomorrow, we're going to talk about it with our construction guys. So we're still on task. Furniture is still scheduled to be delivered in December, so we're excited about that. It can be put up again on the nursing side. We're going to have animal control set up with tables and chairs, kind of makeshift right now until the furniture is delivered in December. We are getting ready for our next supervisory training that will be December 2nd and 4th. It'll be HR, more onboarding and timekeeping and chronos. We're planning for another one in January focused strictly on budgeting and grant reporting. So we're looking forward to that and are planning that. So everybody's pretty excited. And that's all I have.
Flooring issue you guys have.
Are you talking about the animal area, the flooring around the animal area? We're still working through that.
Oh. It got approved and everything, it just needs to get done.
We're working on where we're going to find the financing, what we're going to use. And then we're still having a discussion a little bit with facilities, what will be the best material. So we'll let you know once we, that's decided, and once we decide.
And didn't you have a freezer issue, too?
That is actually, might have been, it's either, either it was just done, I'm sorry, I haven't been there every day, but it's either just been done or it's about to be done.
I thought it was being done last week and probably finished this week.
So. Yeah, to be clear, with those supplementals, we didn't just take them off, we looked at other options to finance them because we analyzed our current budget. Because the county, if anybody's been paying attention to the meetings, most of the supplementals are not moving forward. So we worked internally to continue to move those initiatives forward, but with existing funds. So our budget right now, we looked at the whole department, not just Mary Ellen's budget, and had everybody plan out through the end of the year so that we could see if there was sufficient funds. Plus, there is the special funds that have amassed some decent gains that we could tap into those, for example, for the floor. So that we would, because our supplementals were unlikely to get approved anyway, so we went ahead and made, I guess, provisions and plans to fund them in another way.
It does. Did the, our resolution for changes in furniture expenses, did that get through?
Yes.
That's all been approved?
It's all been approved.
Thank you.
It's approved through the state of Illinois, through the grant, and we're ready to rock and roll.
Any further questions?
The note on the staff day for the luncheon, that was great. And it seemed like it was well-attended, staff had a good time. I wanted to know who won the pumpkin contest, which division.
Environmental. That's going to be in the e-newsletter with all the photos.
I was waiting, I was waiting.
Be able to see all of them.
They were really good. They were very imaginative. So crossed.
Thank you. Director Heck?
Thank you. So I was looking over our screening numbers for the year, and I just thought I'd point out a couple of things. So of the people that we screened this past year, 50% of those people had a high A1C. 55% of the people had an elevated BMI. But I think the most shocking is 71% have elevated blood pressure, but it isn't being treated. So one of our goals is to get out and do more blood pressure education, screenings, things like that for this upcoming year. We've also been really busy, our ER team's been out at the schools. So for the next few months, they're packed, doing presentations on emergency preparedness. But with that, is also included in there is hand washing, so the schools are desperate for those presentations. And a lot of our MRCs have been trained to help with those because we've been having a lot of requests, so they've been wonderful. And then the last update I have is, Melissa talked about it a little bit, but obviously, you know, the budget went through, so WIC was fully funded in that budget. And then also the good news about that is they had proposed to, even though WIC was being proposed to be funded, they wanted to reduce the number of fruits and vegetable benefits that the clients got, and that did not go through either. So those benefits are staying the same. So that's good news for the clients. So good.
Question, comment from the board?
How does the stats that you mentioned compare to years past?
Yeah, I don't have any to, but I can look at that and get back to you.
Anecdotally, it seemed higher.
I think the blood pressure is higher. The 71% not being treated seems really high to me compared to like years past. I can pull those numbers, though, and compare the last year to the new year.
I am remembering before the Affordable Care Act, at work, I would get a lot of patients who used us as primary care for those exact instances that didn't have a doctor, no insurance or thing. And then after that, didn't see them as often because a lot of them got doctors. And I'm worried that what is coming will be a repeat, and we will see these numbers climb. So I don't know.
Do we know why the 71% are being treated? Are they not being seen by physicians?
I don't know the exact reason, but I'm speculating that they just didn't know that it was that high, or they don't go to the physician yearly to get it checked. That's what I'm guessing. Because if they were seeing a doctor, I mean, the doctor would.
Is this just a one-time checkup? They're both recovering, so that's not really diagnosis of hypertension.
Right. So the other thing about that is, some of our clients are repeat because, I don't, I don't know the exact rules, but Medicare will only pay for like once a year, I think, to have this done, or like an A1C or cholesterol. So a lot of those clients that are on Medicare come to us to get like a quarterly check or, you know, a half-year because it's a lot less expensive than going to your physician again. So some of them are repeat, but most not.
Thank you. Director Durret?
Hi. So I was just going to go over the respiratory stats for the month. General respiratory illness is increasing, but COVID influenza, RSV remain low. Anticipate seeing influenza in the next couple of weeks sort of increase if it follows past trends. All of the other reportable conditions are at normal levels. And then this week, our C, well, part of our CD team, so the STI team, is going to the Wellness Fair at McHenry County College to offer STD testing. at McHenry County College to offer STD testing. So it'll be out there this week on eleven nineteen. That's all I have.
Questions, comments? Thank you. Marcel, do you have anything to say? Nothing, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have I am removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Ms. Gaffney, seconded by Ms. Hollifield, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions, comments from the board? No, it says monetary item, we will do a roll call.
Ms. Lawson?
Here. Yes.
Yes.
Also here.
She didn't say yeah. Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Katz?
Yes.
Dr. Ansler?
Yes.
Dr. Zurich?
Yes.
Mr. Marcusson?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen?
Yes.
And Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Got me? Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Gaffney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hollifield?
Yes.
Majority voted in favor, motion passes. Thank you. Next item is do an unfinished business. Seven A fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six merit pay for our personnel.
So the memo is in the packet. Each year, the board decides how it wishes to dole out the merit. As a reminder, we only get merit for actual filled positions. We do not get merit for any open positions. This year, the proposed merit is three point two five. Typically, by now, the reason this year it's not in there as three point two five is that was something else that was floated as a possibility in the budget to change it. I believe, but cannot say a hundred percent, we'll know tomorrow, that it will remain at three point two five. If not, it will probably be three percent.
Understood. Do you want action tonight from the board?
Yes, because regardless of, so regardless of that total amount, every year, the board has decided whether to, so in the PAP, we passed, you know, it was based, it's, the county calls it a merit increase. The Board of Health has consistently stood with it is more of a cost of living increase. And assuming people meet their minimum requirements for the position, that each staff member would get that merit, full merit, regardless of what it is. So in this case, three or three point two five. And so we are just looking for that same recommendation from the board of how you would like the merit to be, the pool to be divided.
Okay, understood.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to evenly disperse the anticipated three or three point two five percent, whatever the merit pay comes out to equitably across all employees as we've done in the past.
Okay, and just, sorry, I should probably say one more thing. So the county still has its guidelines, which are based on hire dates. So all of that would not change. But again, we don't have those because they haven't been approved. That is why they are not included. So after, people are hired early in the fiscal year, get the full amount, and then it tapers off after certain dates throughout the year, like down to fifty percent, you know, seventy-five percent, fifty percent. And then people are hired in the fall typically, I believe, and you know off the top of your head, after September thirtieth, there is no merit. There is also a table move every year, which is half of whatever the merit is. And then they would be eligible for the table move.
I'll make a motion to disperse whatever the merit pay comes from the county in an equitable fashion pursuant to the county's guidelines as we have done in the past.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Marcusson, seconded by Dr. Ansler, to approve a merit pay increase equitable across the board based on the terms previously administered by this board. Any questions or comments from board members, statements? It does have a monetary impact, so we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hollifield? Dr. Zurich?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen?
Yes.
Dr. Ansler?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Katz?
Yes.
Ms. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Gaffney?
Yes.
Mr. Marcusson?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Majority voted in favor, motion passes. Thank you.
What did Lake County do?
I have no idea. For their merits? Can we have a look at that?
Under new and unfinished business, item seven B is Board of Health Officer Election.
I make a motion to accept the same slate of officers from last year.
Just a second.
Second.
Just a second.
I know that.
There is in the packet a slate of officers that's been presented, same officers for the last year or two. Administrator Adamson reached out to each one of the officers, asking if they would serve another year, and all four agreed to serve an additional year. But that does not mean we have to utilize the slate of officers. So I'm going to ask three times from the board if there's any additional nominations for any of the offices.
Just to be clear, I said I would serve as long as you continue to serve.
No, you said you were going to be president after he.
Mister, I eliminate him.
You said I'll.
You get your chance tomorrow.
Joe, Kyle. Oh, I'll see you then.
Someone else, take it.
Does any board member wish to nominate someone for a position as an officer? Does any board member wish to nominate an additional person for a position as officer?
Does anyone wish to be nominated?
Any board member wish to nominate anybody to be a position for officer? You're seeing no other persons. I will recognize Ms. Gaffney for her motion.
Thank you. I motion that we approve the current slate of officers for the period of next year, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second it. A motion has been made by Ms. Gaffney, seconded by Dr. Zurich, to approve the slate of officers for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion varies. Congratulations to the officers.
Congratulations.
You know what? I earned a donor.
Board issues. Any board member have an issue? Carolyn?
I have issues. Issues, tissues and ashes.
No, I would just like to say thank you to our directors and Melissa for scheduling the wonderful tour that I was able to do this last week. And I still have animal control I'll be out at on Wednesday. And thank you for the time in the wonderful tour that you gave me and how you explained all of your department and what you do. And my takeaway is, every resident in McHenry County is in some way served by our health department. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a little side note for Kyle. Tomorrow, he receives a promotion in the fire station.
You're all welcome. It's at two PM. I didn't mean you're all wel, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
You're all welcome. No, you're welcome to attend. This is open to the public. It's at two PM in Schaumburg, at Fire Station fifty-one, nine fifty West Schaumburg. So afterwards, there'll be, we'll get together at Fox and Hound in Schaumburg, so.
What is this, the promotion, if we might ask?
I'm being promoted to lieutenant. Couple days?
What is this? Oh, just explains that you're awesome.
You're welcome.
So what you're saying, so what you're saying is you'll bring more than just donors?
I'll bring thirteen, so.
Very good. Anybody else sign from the board?
I have.
Oh, once more. Okay, we lost the styrofoam, but we have gained with the help of the environmental department, who's been so kind helping me get my community fridges. We're buying them tomorrow, so we will have a community fridge at SCC Church in Crystal Lake and the Nipper Sink Library, so this way, people can donate perishables. So if you, it's Thanksgiving and you brought way too much, you can put it in the community fridge for our communities.
Where did you say, SCC?
Yeah, Church in Crystal Lake and then Nipper Sink Library.
Awesome.
So I still have lots of grant money, so if you know another place that wants a community fridge, let me know.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome.
State of the Union, this patient, this patient received a thank you note from Crystal Lake Fire Department and Northern Illinois Preparedness and Response Training Summit and Planning Team. Thank you for the positive comments about our staff. Well-stated. Appendix. One thing that I noticed that I wanted to comment on in regards to the appendix is going through the McHenry County Health Reportable Conditions Report. You start paging through and reading, and you get to the statistics, and you see zero, 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 zero. I mean, many, many of the diseases and illnesses that are common to humans. And you think, wow, a lot of zeros. But you know what? At one time, there wasn't a lot of zeros in these columns. These columns are filled with high numbers, and it's only because of our healthcare system and our public health system that changed those numbers from all, from being high over decades to now was being reported zeros almost all the way across the board. And that is quite an accomplishment for the public health sector, and our staff deserves recognition for getting that accomplished. I'd like to give a round of applause. Anybody else have a comments on the appendix?
And that also includes animal control. Ten years ago, we were euthanizing a thousand cats a year, and now we're down to less than sixty.
Cats and dogs, less than a hundred.
Less than a hundred, yeah. Less than dogs, so.
Next item is eleven on the agenda on executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session for the purposes of discussing previous minutes from executive sessions dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, as well as employee performance review subject. So five ILCS one twenty dash two, seed one.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Marcusson, seconded by Ms. Gaffney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we are in executive session.
Bye, guys, thanks for coming on.
Thank you. Congratulations.